All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, November 16. I am going to call the meeting of the Grafton Library Trustees to order at 7:02 PM. As this is a remote meeting, please allow me to run through the script and I apologize that it is on for everyone to see. As a preliminary matter, this is Stephanie Texera, the Vice Chair of the Grafton Board of Library Trustees. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Good? All right. Members, as I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Marty?
Hi.
Aaron?
Here.
Karen?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
I can't see anyone else. Sorry. Karen?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Sorry if I missed anyone. Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Beth?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
All right. And it doesn't look like we have any anticipated speakers. Beth, can you just confirm that there's no one anticipated to speak that's not on the agenda?
No, they would have had to let us know and put it on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
We have public input at the end, though, if anyone wants.
Yes. All right. So, good evening. This is an open meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting laws to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. In order, which you can find posted on the town's website at www.grafton-mass.gov, allows public bodies to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting of the Grafton Public Library's Board of Trustees, it is convening by Zoom as posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting will be recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Be quiet. We are now going to turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our meeting and to assure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Vice Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and please start by stating your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. For any items that will afford public comment, public comment will be conducted as follows. I, the Vice Chair, will first read the public comment or questions received in advance or in the chat by real time and then read them out. And public comment during the meeting will be through the chat feature of Zoom. The Vice Chair will read any real time comments typed by the computer participants in the chat feature, followed by real time board responses. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. All right. Thank you, everyone. So I want to move on to approve the minutes from the October 17, 2020 meeting and also the October 26, 2020 meeting. If anyone has any questions or comments, we can split them. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Thank you, Karen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for that second, John. Any comments? Hearing and seeing no comments. Those in favor, please say aye. Marty?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dana? Dana, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, sorry. Aye.
Thank you. And Stephanie, aye. All right. Now we'll move on to the next article, approval of bills for FY '23 warrants 19 and 21. 20 has been removed. So again, warrants 19 and 21.
I make a motion to approve warrants 19 and 21.
Thank you, Karen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Is there any discussion on these motions? Hearing and seeing no discussion. Those in favor, please say aye. Marty?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And Stephanie, aye. We're going to move on to ongoing business. Beth, could you please provide us an update for the MPLCP Building Program and Grant?
Sure. We're still waiting for the same things. There's a piece missing that we're waiting for it to come in, not missing, but it was damaged or broke within the HVAC system. We think that it should arrive this week. But because of the Thanksgiving holiday, I don't know how fast the turnaround will be for veterans to get it installed, to make the repair that's making the program room down in Children's, not keep temperature with the rest of the building. We've had other issues where because of that piece outstanding, we're still in commissioning, which means in spite of multiple requests to have a certain temperature range and to have thermostats in public areas unlocked and to gain online access for myself to the system, like those are all just still up in the air until the final commissioning is done. The HVAC commissioning is also the only thing that's holding up our lead certification and it looks like we will get the Silver Lead status, which is amazing because it's $165,000 that we'll get with our next check from Mass Board of Library Commissioners in June, probably. So if we can get all that taken care of by the end of the year, that'll be really wonderful. Building Committee met at the end of October and then again the first week of November to look at the proposal for presentation and Makerspace doors. So originally going to be sliding barn doors to close off the area and it turned out we couldn't complete what was proposed or designed because of size and weight. So after kind of trying to figure out a different solution, they finally came up with a solution, requested a change order, which would be a credit for the original design of the doors and then a change to do the newly proposed bifold doors. But it was less money to do the original design. So we were getting $9,200 back, but the cost of the new doors is $29,000 and the committee approved it, Building Committee approved to move forward and get the select board to sign off on it. And then like after a day, well, no, we actually don't want to spend that much money. There has to be another cheaper solution. So we're now kind of back to square one and looking for an alternative solution for doors to close off the presentation area adjacent to the community room so that you can do like meal prep for a program and then open the doors and not have it be distracting to the people in the meeting and for the Makerspace so that we could, if we needed to or had short staffing, make the collection and the seating available while locking off the computers and the printers from the public. It would also allow us to close off the room and keep it unlocked for programs and events to take place for teenagers. So that these doors are kind of vital. They were part of the program all along and we need to come up with a solution. So we're still working toward that. We received our gate for the bottom of the stairs. We are waiting for a lock, a wheel, and it came with the wrong color panel inserts, which is not a big deal and not preventing us from using it. But I am leaning toward, even if we don't have a lock by January 1st, just making the facility rental available for people who've been clamoring to rent the space because we've now lost money for over a year because this wasn't taken care of and implemented at the end of the project. So when the gate closes, it's actually pretty easy to get a chair and stand on a chair and reach over and pop the gate open and go upstairs if you were so inclined. So it's really a trust kind of mechanism where we're presenting a barrier and trusting people to respect it and not do exactly what I just said. The architect says it will keep honest people honest. So that's what we have to use and work with and that's what we're going with. I had a short meeting with Lauren from MBLC this week who said that it's great that I turned in some delinquent reports for July, August, and September, but the math isn't lining up for when we expended the grant money. And after some clarification from the accountant, it turns out that we don't get it and immediately expend it. If you remember, it's our personal grant. So basically, we get the money, we hold it, it gains interest for the town. And then when we get like a bill from the bank to pay down the money that we borrowed, that's when we transfer money over. So it is my job to straighten that out and we'll take care of it for the next report. I did hear from Lauren that it turns out the financial stuff that I've been agonizing over is actually not my job. And it's the owner's project manager who has to take care of all the final accounting, the list of what was proposed through the estimate and then what was actually spent. And he or his team get to break down the ineligible versus eligible costs. And we do want to include totals from donations and capital campaigns. So while we won't spell out specifically like how much something costs, we will say it was this much for furniture or this much for shelving or this much for landscaping because we do want to look at what the total project cost was, not just what was covered by the grant. And Doug Bowman very helpful has provided a list of invoices, so I was able to categorize and total those. So Lauren from MBLC, who's our construction specialist, says that as soon as we're ready to just do that final financial report, we don't have to do any more monthly reporting to them, even if we're technically not finished with the project. And as long as we have the final report done by, I think it's February, maybe March 1st for February, then we will get our next payment on time. And I'm watching other local libraries who've been on the waiting list and are getting their local funding. There's about unfortunately a 50% fail rate and that's really unfortunate for towns like Westboro. But it may mean that if enough towns pull out or they don't do the matching funding, and the reason they're not getting it is because all of their projects have doubled through COVID. So what they thought was going to be around a 50% matching grant is now a 25% grant with the town picking up 75% and it's just not doable. Which again, it's terrible for them, but it may mean that if there's money left over because people are not able to move forward, then we might, instead of waiting another full year to get our last grant payment, get it all at once and again, be able to pay down that grant reimbursable portion of the bond. We wouldn't get extra money, but we might just get the final payment in one check early instead of two broken out sums. So there's that possibility. Again, not that I'm looking forward to anybody failing on their projects, but it's just something to be grateful for if it does happen. So and that's it. I'm happy to answer questions about the project.
All right. Thanks, Beth. Just because I have one question about it, just because it kind of crosses over into a few other areas with us as far as staffing and the teen room, that door for the Makerspace. When is, do you need the Board's input on ideas to kind of Band-Aid that until Building Committee approves and gets a door installed there? Or is that something that we can expect some ideas presented to us just because we want, you know, as much of the teen space to be functioning as much of the time as possible?
I don't know that it's stopping us from doing very much because honestly, the children's staff are very willing to like let somebody in if we have the door locked because there isn't somebody in the room. So that's, you know, a couple of days a week from 10 to 1, I don't have staff. And because there's glass in between the two spaces, there is some oversight. So I mean, it's not really preventing us from doing very much to not have the doors. It's really going to be a convenience in terms of, oh, I want to print something on the 3D printer and I'm walking away for it. Now I can shut it off and nobody can touch it. Or we're going to have a program and it's, you know, the gaming room's right next to us. We want to shut the door so that we can kind of enclose the conversation we're going to have or the movie we're going to watch or the program we're going to do. So.
Great. Well, thank you for just explaining that a little bit more. Does anybody have any questions for Beth regarding the building grant? Right. Seeing and hearing none. Beth, can we move on to your FY '23 budget update?
Sure. I did like just get the update from the town. I had some trouble deciphering it and didn't have time to dedicate to it, so I didn't send it out. I'd say that we're not, overall, the budget is fine, but the areas that I continue to be concerned about are the same ones, you know, contracted services. And that's why I'm bringing bills to the Board because I didn't budget for security team support for, you know, the staff key card readers or the camera system or the door scheduling system. Because I thought it was a, you know, I got trained and thought it would be done and it's very difficult to use. And then, you know, we still have no budget for programming, no budget for marketing. So our gift account is depleting because we're leaning on that to pay for those costs. I will have it for December, though, and the accountant is going to do a training for staff who are interested, which I immediately said yes, in how to run reports through the Vader accounting system and how to decipher them because they look really different from the software ones.
Okay, wonderful. Where that's going to be sent out to us for next meeting. Does anyone have any immediate questions for Beth? Right. Hearing and seeing none. Let's move on to Beth again, the IT update.
We still don't have laptops available for the public. We bought Deep Freeze in July and we get IT a whole extra day now. But right now they're spending their time reading every page of the 171-page manual for Deep Freeze so they can show us how to use it and get it installed. So and I still don't have a timeline for when that's going to happen. We lost Wi-Fi access, actually all internet access for maybe a day and a half. I think regular plug-in Ethernet came back before the wireless because we had a bad switch. I haven't seen a bill for the replacement switch. So IT and Town acted quickly to get us a replacement so that we could come back online, but it affected the book drop and we had to turn away patrons who came in to hop on the wireless. But it is up and running now and I'm not clear why something a year old, year and a half old failed. I haven't seen IT to ask that question.
Okay, thank you. Was that, did we happen to track how many patrons we had to turn away during the time that IT was down, the internet?
I didn't. I have to be honest, I only looked at the no log for October. So I'll provide it in the November report if people tracked it. But like I noticed somebody asked on Facebook yesterday if the wireless was back up and we had posted earlier, I think either that day or Monday because I think it was up by Monday, mid morning Monday, just after we opened. So somebody missed the update that it was restored. It was asking online. It's the only one I saw.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Beth about their IT? Debbie?
Not so much a question for Beth, but Jonathan from IT had told us that the Wi-Fi issue was not just the library, that it was other town Wi-Fi as well. And Cindy, I'd actually called me on Monday as they'd fixed something, I think at the municipal center, and then got our Wi-Fi back online and it was probably 11:00 AM Monday. So I mean, they did it as quickly as they could and it wasn't just us. It wasn't just the library.
I was missing that piece. Thank you.
Thank you for that context. Absolutely. Dana?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Beth, is that fairly infrequent that we lose the Wi-Fi? That's what I thought. So it's not, we don't have a lot of people complaining about it. It's, this is just an issue for this particular time. And now we've been told it was town-wide. Okay, just wondered. Thank you.
We're phones down too, Debbie? Do you know? Because we have voiceover IP. No, she says no. Okay. Interesting. It's all the same system, so. I think the other thing I want to let you know, it's kind of IT related, it's kind of policy related. We had an issue with somebody in the children's room looking at inappropriate content. So if you've been in there lately, you'll notice that our computers have been rearranged a little bit so that we can see what's on the screens down there. And there's a nice new splash page that kind of puts the rules for internet use in kid-friendly language. And because those are on Wi-Fi and not hardwired, it actually, like, it felt like an inconvenience when we reopened that we didn't have hardwired computers down there because they never completed the wiring in the children's room. But it turns out the wireless connection is actually stable and fast and allows for kids to browse and play games and do what they need to do down there. And it also means that everything is flexible and can be moved because the computers themselves are just connecting to the Wi-Fi. So what I thought was a problem is actually, has actually turned out to be a bonus.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on IT? Right. Hearing and seeing none. Let's move on to Grafton Public Library Capital Campaign update. Doug is unavailable to provide that. So Dana, not to put you on the spot, but can you help us out there?
Yes, I can. I think we divide this chore. A great chore it is. We're working on, basically, the good news is that we have all the commemorative or thank you plaques are all completed and they're going into production. We note that we helped the town out and the library because we redid the dedication plaque for the library because it had several errors on it, including some bad misspellings and stuff. So that will be, we're going to, we will be, that's part of the program that we're doing. So what we have to ensure is I have to find out exactly, I have to kind of know, I have to, what we have to do is because the wall was damaged when it was put up because that's, we weren't given any instructions on how to hang the dedication sign. So we got to take it off and I'm going to have it taken off by the experts and then we're going to have the wall, if we're hoping, it's just replastered and then we'll have to repaint. So I'm going to try, we're going to try to do that so that that plaque is not down very, very long. So we have to incorporate that. Plus, I do think, we've been thinking about it, thinking about it, and I could discuss this with Beth and other people. We may want to, I'm going to try to see if we can have the signage put up when the library isn't open or we might just have to, we have to figure out how to do it because it may be difficult to do it with patrons around. Because I don't know exactly how much, you know, how much there'll be workmen out there, you know, putting things on the walls and stuff. But we will figure that out. I'll have more discussions with the vendor, which is Sunshine's, which is a local company. So that's coming to fruition. Also, I'm really, depending upon the weather and how COVID is and all of that, I would like to have a donor, we did not have any donor parties because it really wasn't the best time because of COVID and we couldn't have drinks and we couldn't have any appetizers or anything like that. So we couldn't make it festive. So we're going to try to, we are going to plan some to do as soon as we have all the plaques done. And so we're going to make a big do about that, invite our donors. We're still, we're just thinking about it. I was, so anyway, I did the dedication party, but I'll be doing this on behalf of the Capital Campaign. The other thing is, we do have other commitments that we're working on. One great thing is, we were given a gift to be able to purchase benches and we did purchase six benches, which Doug put together and my son Henry helped them last week. And so those are all put together and Doug did an excellent job of basically getting a color print out exactly where the benches should be. So the town is helping him with the Department of Public Works and they've devised, they know where to put the benches. They're going to be, there's going to be like four in a circle. And then we have, we have a bench that was donated for Jen White and that will be there. It will be part of it. It'll be to the, one bench will be to the left, one bench will be to the right. It'll be exactly where Jen White's folks, everyone that donated to that wanted it. And we are going to spruce that up a little bit. We're going to repaint some of the greens because some of that is chipped. And we also bought, the benches are going to match that, so it's going to be great. So that should be finished. I think that's going to be done as soon as the DPW can schedule it and that's what they're working on. So that's good. The other thing is, we have been working on and off on a project to, one of the things that the architects had put into the program was it was going to be a lighting structure to provide some lights out on the community patio. The thought was it would be a good way for us to be able to use that patio in conjunction with the, with the community room. So we're continuing to work on that. We think we have found an easy solution and so we'll probably start working on that again. And we did, we have one committee that's working on organizing and looking at all the furniture, the additional furniture that needs to be purchased. So we did meet once, we have to get back together and I'm going to see who's available in the first week of December or the last week in November. So we're going to meet, we'll meet with that. Beth had given us some things that she wanted. So actually, we think we can start ordering some of it. And some of it is really like, I think we needed some kind of mirrors or something in the bathrooms and stuff like that. So we're going to get that. We're going to go back and look at that until Beth, let Beth know that she can order those things or whoever's going to order it. But we still have to go, we've been going over that, trying to figure out how much furniture do we really need for the community patio area? And so we're kind of dealing with, we got to really look at the space itself and realize that we have, we've got like three doors that open into it. So we just have to make sure that whatever we come up with is going to allow enough room for people to get around. I think what we're probably going to do is order some tables with chairs, but I have a feeling they're going to have to be between the two doors that come, lead out from the community room so that we're, you know, they're not blocking anybody's ability to move a wheelchair or just walk or, you know, whatever. So we're working on that. And then also we were dealing with the, I think I have to get back in touch with the teenage librarian and ask her about what were the things that she had requested, the top, whatever, top things, top items. So that's pretty much what we're working on right now. Also, we do have children's librarian requests and some of that is going to be outside in the amphitheater area. It'll be weatherized and it will enhance that area because that was another area that we received donations from to enhance it. So we'll be doing that. That's about it for right now. Any questions?
Thanks so much. Does anybody have questions for Dana about Capital Campaign? Beth?
I actually just wanted to clarify. The sign installer who put the dedication plaque up didn't damage the wall, but the concern is that when we take it down, there could be damage because of the adhesive that was put on it. The reason that it was incorrect is because what the committee signed off on was not the The reason that it was incorrect is because what the committee signed off on was not the final spec that the construction manager, who was new at the time, received and he basically ordered the wrong version of the plaque. So that's why, that's why, there had, there were typos and why were we doing it?
I didn't know, I didn't know all that detail, but I was told there was damage on that wall, praying there isn't. Well, that would be the best news I've ever heard. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna have it, I'll see, I gotta talk, I had someone who told me there was damage on it, I hope there isn't.
It's that, there will likely be damage when you-
Oh, when we take it off.
Yeah, with the plaster, but my suggestion was you get a bigger plaque and it'll just cover-
Well, we didn't, that's not the way we worked it, but I don't think it'd be as bad as we think it is and it'll just be taken care of and no one will even know that. And I didn't really mean to throw you under the bus, Beth, because Beth was not given specific instructions and it arrived when we needed to put it up immediately. And there were some errors in it anyway. So, you know, we're gonna fix it.
We're, we're gonna put it on a different wall too, which is why there's a concern-
Yes.
Now we've got to have something that'll-
That's right, yeah, we're gonna put it on a different wall, so that's right. So we have to have that wall looking good. I'll look at it again, you know what, I think, I'll go look at it again because maybe, maybe it'll be a, well, now it's, we still have to do the work because the, the plaque we're putting up is a little bit smaller, I think. But we'll figure it out, but it's not a big deal, I just want to make sure it's smooth and everybody's happy.
Yeah.
But we will have to take it off the wall to be able to put the, okay. So there's gonna be a time, like maybe two weeks, a week, we won't have a plaque in the, in the, in the entrance by, and I'm really pleased that we were able to do this because we've added a lot of people's names to the project who worked on the project from the beginning and we weren't, the, the dedication sign didn't have that. And so I, I think it, you know, it's a blessing that we can fix it, so that's what we're doing. Because everybody that was on the committees and like some select board members and other committee members from the building and construction, their names will be on it. Because we had a lot of people that really contributed that weren't, we weren't, we, we're now able to thank or, you know, recognize.
Yeah, and we will make the building accessible, we usually have custodial at 7:30, so like 7:30- Yeah, open.
Okay, we'll talk, that sounds great.
Yeah, I, I did forget to mention that our ADA counters should be worked on in December. So there will be some disruption with areas closed or maybe, and people will have to use laptops instead of sitting at the computer bar that we have. So that's also forthcoming in December. And then the last thing is, I, I do have a request, we, we've had a, a long list of, you know, outstanding items for the project and I would prefer that those go through me because we have a chain of command where staff are letting me know what they need and prioritizing it. So you and I can talk. And thanks Christie, who's leaving.
That's pretty much what I meant, everything goes through Beth, but I just meant, you know, we want to make sure we have that right. Of course, they give their input.
Sorry, I was talking and forgot I was muted. Apologize for that. So did anybody have any other questions for Dana? No, okay, before we move on, I just want to highlight that Christie Proctor, who signed off, she is on the accessibility committee. And she did just put in the chat that if we have any questions about accessibility or universal design needs for any aspect of the library to reach out to her, she's made herself available as the liaison to the accessibility committee for us. All right. So before we, before I pass it over to Beth for a Friends membership and update, I just want to make another plea to my fellow board members. I stepped down about a month and a half ago after serving about two years with the Friends and it's really nice to have a member from the Board of Trustees as a liaison to the Friends just to kind of provide these updates. So Erin, do you have something to say before I pass it on to Beth?
I, I attended the last meeting, so I have some notes to contribute.
Okay, wonderful, so either Erin or Beth, if you could give us that update.
Oh, I think Beth is bowing out. So I was able to attend part of their meeting, it was at 7:30 PM last night. I happened to connect with Carrie earlier in the day and she mentioned they were meeting that evening and I know that you weren't able to attend their meetings anymore, Stephanie, so I volunteered to, to join. But certainly if, it, it's, it's always good to have other trustees get to know the Friends and have the Friends get to know the trustees to, you know, keep that relationship. So the, the, the couple of things that I was able to note that they discussed is that they're not accepting any, any donations until probably about January. I think they had some regular donations and, and people were kind of, they did send a notification and I think the people who generally donate got the message, but maybe not a lot of others did. So they're, you know, dealing with, with that. They, the book sales are, with the Down Under are going very well. They're selling about 60 or 70 books per week, you know, mostly kids' books. But also sometimes like whole groups of books, so they'll put out like a whole bunch of, you know, science fiction or something and then they'll come back to, to, to check on them and they're all gone, right? So I guess hindsight's 2020, they often forget, well, what, what sold really good? You know, maybe they should put that out again, so. So there's some discussion about that. They postponed their November book sale probably to February before Valentine's Day. So next year, so I think they talked about reserving the, one of, one half of the conference room ahead of time so they can get set up for that book sale. The mini golf caddy stacks, they made about $1,500, I think, after paying the vendor, so that was a $1,500 profit. And businesses contributed quite a bit of, of that money, I, I believe, that's not an exact figure, but I think it was a really great event for the community. They were discussing doing Grafton celebrates the holidays and creating some book bundles. Those are always a great item that, that the Friends, you know, provide to the community for Christmas presents. And I think there was some just discussion about when, when they can get started in getting set up for that. So Beth, if, if you haven't been contacted yet, I think they were just wondering what time they can get started and what time the library would be open on that Sunday. I think they were gonna meet ahead of time, probably the day before to, to do a lot of the prep work. And I think they were looking at summer reading t-shirts because the Friends do pay for the summer reading t-shirts, so they're looking at designs for that. And that's about when I, I dropped off, so Beth, if you have anything else to, to add, certainly, you know, feel free.
Sure.
They'll hear any questions, sure.
We appropriate about $2,000 of the 10 that they give us every year to help fund summer reading and some of that is to pay for the t-shirts, the staffware to promote the program from like May to September. But we've been asking, often the design is, is so attractive that patrons are asking where they can buy a shirt. And there are shirts that are staff-only that we wouldn't sell to the public, but we really don't have a mechanism except for the Friends to sell summer reading program t-shirts. So I believe Sarah met with them and they're trying to work out which of the designs they should purchase and make available to the public and at what price point, but I don't have the results of that meeting yet, so.
Great, thank you. And, and I think our, so December is generally when I think the Board of Trustees, as a group, try to renew our, our Friends memberships. So we often would lose, would lose track, so we felt it was better to just renew as a group as a reminder. So just keep that in mind for December slash January, just to renew your, your Friends membership. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much for, for joining last night. Does anybody have any questions for Erin or Beth on the Friends? And just a reminder, who loves some, some more trustees going to meet members of the Friends. You can ask myself or I know Erin and Beth have spent a great deal of time, so please feel free and reach out to any of us with, with questions on that. I'm going to move forward to the walkabout, so I'm, I'm gonna cover this. I did a walkabout update last month and I just wanted to kind of close the loop on some of those items as well as highlight some new things. The librarians are doing a wonderful job at really getting their spaces in order. And there was some concerns that I had noted about just safety in case of emergency in their particular offices. So I did note specifically that the teens librarian and the children's librarian spaces are definitely looking more organized and they're safe walking ways. I did not go, when I went upstairs, I did not specifically check the adult or reference librarians spaces, although I know that I was told that they are working on them and have their own deadlines this month. So hopefully by the end of this month, those are all set up. The temperature was something that I flagged, as you heard Beth kind of say that that part is coming in and then we will hopefully get a timeline on when that is fixed for the children's programming room. Because that was a concern on controlling the temperature there as well as I had concerns about the safety as far as either cameras or alarming the doors from the children's space and the teen space. So I, I am happy to report that I set off the fire alarm today in the, the teen space and that I was unable to get in from the outside into the teen store, so that was locked, so that was, that was good. The children's space, it does not have those bars yet, those will have to end up getting keyed specially. I'm not exactly sure of the process of that, but that's something that we have to be working on, but it is a little bit outside of what we would do. Sorry, Erin, I see your hand before I go on, do you have a question?
Just talking about temperature. Did you happen to take a walk, or when was your walk-through?
I, I did one today.
Okay, did you happen to go into the historic reading room?
Yes.
Yeah, so I was in there last, last night and I don't know if there's a concern with heating in that room, it's just a big empty space. And it may not be as well insulated as the, as the new library space because, you know, it's just an old building. But is the only heating element, those mini splits kind of at the top, left and right, where the reference desk used to be? Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so I, I don't have a concern, but it was one of the only unoccupied places where I could sit on a Zoom call. And so I had to wear my coat, you know, because I, it was chilly in there. And certainly I was sitting by a window too, so that didn't help, but a lot of the seating is kind of along, along the walls, right? So that, at least a comfortable seating. So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if, if that's a concern, but it was rather cold in there.
All right. Yeah, we can stay on this, this fine for a minute, so Beth and then Debbie.
It's a concern that I continue to report. One issue is because of the commissioning, I'm completely locked out from making any adjustments. So it's 60 degrees, it was 59 degrees, I think, yesterday. I can't, no matter what I do to the thermostat, I can't change it. And when I go online, I'm locked out and I can't make any changes and I think I'm just not gonna have access until they finish the commissioning. So we're not wasting any money heating a huge space because it's not adequately being heated. We may be wasting electricity because it seems to be set to air conditioning even though it is the 16th of November. But I'm aware and continue to push it forward, it's just not changing fast enough to make me happy.
Okay, thank you Debbie.
That's just what I was gonna say, the, the air conditioning has actually been running and we're only able to change it in certain locations. Like in my part of the admin office, I could touch the thermostat and change it. In Beth's office, I could not do it. In the historic reading room, I could not do it. For whatever reason, there was a touch button on my thermostat that I could switch it from air conditioning to heat, but literally the air conditioning is running. So that's, that's part of the problem too.
I was able to change mine today. Yeah, still locked out of the main reading room. And this is kind of the problem related to the teen librarian office being 59 or 61 or 64 degrees. That room is controlled by a public thermostat in the maker space, which again, like, we're locked out. It's on air conditioning and it's set at 65 or 64 and I can't change it. It's an ongoing frustration.
Beth, I know that you mentioned that we would have to wait. Is, did they provide you a reason as to why that cannot be adjusted or that they will not adjust it beforehand?
I do not have direct contact with veterans, that's, it's all being done through the construction team. Veterans does not return phone calls, so I can't get an answer.
Okay, yeah, that seems like something we need to get an answer about as it gets colder and we don't want to be paying for air conditioning.
The construction team meets every Monday at 4 o'clock and I can forward the link to this board, but maybe there needs to be more voices than just my complaining about this problem.
Yeah, that would be great if you could send that to us. Um, Erin?
So in the other comment in the historic reading room, and I think the librarians may know about this, is the, the timer for the, for the lights in that room. I mean, I was sitting in there and it just shut off on me and I thought it was motion sensors, so I started walking around the room, but I, I had to get a librarian to, to help me out and they're like, oh, here's the lights for the room and they don't know why it's, it shuts off at that time. I thought it was daylight savings, but maybe not.
I probably need to have the electrician come back and help me because I, I had it set to go off when unoccupied, motion sensor turn on and then shut off after 9 o'clock at night. But in the historic room, it shuts off much earlier and then you have to manually turn it on. And you have the opposite problem down at the other end in the new book room where the lights will dim when it's unoccupied and then come on full bright when someone walks in, but every night we're manually shutting it off and by the time I'm getting in my car, those lights are back on again at night. And, and like I said, I, I was trained, I was on the phone with the guy while I was programming it, we tested it, it seemed fine and it's just not working the right way. And I think it's actually beyond my capability to get it working, so I'll probably have to call them, but that will mean a bill because we're past warranty.
Okay.
I'm aware and we'll call and schedule it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last item that I wanted to circle back on from last month's walkabout was that the closet in the community room was cleaned out. So either by the town or the Friends, whoever was using it as storage, both have emptied their things out. So that, that's great, the only outstanding thing as far as the grounds also, being covered with litter that I saw today was actually a very large cardboard out on the community patio that I was told was from when the benches came. And so we're gonna need to have that removed with recycling and I did connect with Beth on that today. So just some new things that have come up in the past month. In the historic reading room, you may see that there is a caution for possible debris falling. It is not currently falling anymore, but it was. I know that there was a conversation in a meeting about that. Before I move on, Beth, do you want to just kind of touch on what that was about?
Sure, I think it started leaking at the either end of September, beginning of October, following rain. And I immediately thought it was due to the Koopla's continuing deterioration, which was brought to our attention by Andy DeShane, I think, at the end of 2020. As something that would need to be taken care of in the near future because it was aging, it was repaired, restored and preserved 20 years ago. So the town sent Rockwell Roofers, who's one of their on-call people, to climb up and take a look and they identified a pipe that had perforated, not the ceiling, but the- Not the ceiling, but the roof and they put some caulking around it. Put the sign up in case it continued to leak and then had. Maya, the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association, who ensures the town's properties and and items. To come out and take a look and their assessment yesterday morning. Yesterday morning was it is not the pipe that was causing the issue, but it is indeed the cupola. So I got that news late last night from William Blake, who was on site to take a walk through with Maya. And the result is that William and Evan came out today and they actually. I gave him the keys, they went up on the roof. I mean, I'm assuming they're not still stuck up there looking at the roof and the damage to the cupola. I'm not clear yet on what the next steps are, except. That Mass Historic Commission's preservation grant has been on my radar. And I'm just waiting, I've been waiting for them to announce a new grant cycle. But whether we get funding, wherever we get our funding to make this. Restoration or repair or whatever it's gonna be. From, I still need written estimates from architects or contractors, so we know what the scope of this project is. So I do have David L King. Who did the restoration twenty years ago, who has not retired, who's gonna come out, I think Friday to look at the cupola. And William Hammond, whose name I got from somebody else. To come and take a look and make an estimate, but I I do think. Maybe there's a stopgap that we can do to stop any further leaking or damage. But I don't know. And like I just don't have a timeframe or an answer and it could be that Evan and William took a look and have had started having conversations, maybe involving building department. That they haven't touched base with me on yet, but so just know that we're aware, we're working on it, we want to prevent further damage. Yeah, Karen and I were talking today and had the brilliant idea that maybe we could ask BBT kids to. Come and repair it, but I don't know that they could get up there, you know, we might have to remove the whole cupola and repair it. Stephanie's muted again. Dana, go ahead.
Now Dana is muted.
I'm sorry, am I? I forgot. It's it says, okay, yeah. Now, what I was gonna say, Beth, is David King is very good and he's the fellow that. Because when I first joined the trustees, I don't think it was twenty years ago, but. I think they maybe just did that work. I don't know, because I thought I bugged Hilding to get the. I thought I was the one that bugged Hilding to get some of the grants, but anyway, he is really wonderful. He is really tops in his field and he loves. That our building and, you know, the town's building and that cupola, so he's like the best you can get. So I think that's great. So are you? Do I understand that you're spearheading all of these? You're getting all of these estimates and you're being like the. Facility manager on this or what's going? Is that what we have? If we have to do that, we have to do it. I just wondered.
I think it is in my job description, right? That I'm responsible for the building and I think it's in the trustees' charge or mission or whatever. Town charter that you are the stewards of the building.
Right.
I think it does fall on me, but like my expertise, like I I need somebody else to help me if, because we're gonna have to go out to bid for this project. I have the box from with the documentation from the last time we did the project, sitting in my office and it was like a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the. MHC grant only covered about forty thousand and the town had to raise and appropriate the rest. And that was again twenty years ago, it was a hundred and forty five thousand dollars because you can't just send someone out to fix it. You need. Yeah, an architect to do planning and design.
I I think maybe this was before my time. I think maybe we had to do like a fix. But I was gonna, well, I was on the board. I was gonna say, what about, I know the Mass Historic Preservation Group. Would be interested. They're the ones that gave some monies and they know the thing that. They know is that we we being grafted, we finish our projects and that's why we've been so successful like Grafton Common. What what I'm wondering is what about Mass Cultural Facilities Fund? Would this be something they might do?
I don't.
Because it is historic.
Yeah, if you have resources, send them to me offline and we'll pursue.
I said I would help with that too, if you need help with the grant itself.
So I'm just going back, I just want to touch on some of the big changes that I saw downstairs. The children's room, if you have not been in it, you should go in it. It looks amazing. They have set up a huge. Calendar so that easily when you walk in, you can identify what activities they're doing on each date. And the days that the library is going to be closed, so that is, you know, front and center. When you walk in, they have transformed it into dinosaur spaces. And they have a science experiment going on with. A contained rotting pumpkin, so you can kind of, they can see that life. Cycle as well as just decorations and while I was in that space. There was a patron that gave a really lovely compliment. I actually pulled. The head librarian for the children's space over because she was available and I just wanted her to hear it directly and they were. A patient from out of town and said that they library hop with their child. And that the children's space in Grafton, since we have reopened it, is just the best that she can bring her child to and. It's always colorful and vibrant and they change the activities that are available and so she just. Was raving about the the space and the librarians and what they're doing with the programming, so just to share that with you guys. And then just saved it for last because I know we're going to be circling to the teens. Next on the agenda, but to bring your attention back to the teen space, so. We know that it's been a topic of our conversation for a little while. And we did talk about how to. Create new teen. Rule room, room rules that fit within our policy. It's unfriendly looking, to say the least, when you walk down the hallway. The rules are plastered on the door and then when you walk in, they're plastered on a board. And on a table that normally has a librarian now at the door instead of back. In their permanent desk. And then as you turn around, it's again plastered underneath. So I and I did flag this, but we want teens to come and use the space and. It just, it felt like. With all of those signs so close to the entrance, even when you turned around to see it. It kind of to me felt like you're not wanted, you're not wanted, you're not wanted, and that is not the impression. That I I know we as a board want to give and if the teen librarians need. Our assistance on how to maybe. Better navigate this, it just, it for me felt very off-putting and so even if we're getting teens. To come back to that space, it seems like we're immediately. Letting them know everything that we do not want them to do instead of. Invite like creating more of an inviting space for them to come into and talking to them about programming. And so that that was a very stark difference between the entrance of the children's room and then the entrance of the teen. Space, so I. I just wanted to flag that because I know that we're trying to move those things forward. And this just seems like we kind of put up another barrier and I don't think that was what was intended. But I just wanted to throw that out for for you all to go and kind of take a look. Add and and maybe offer if you have any suggestions, so with that, that was my walkabout. If anybody has any. Comments or questions, please feel free. Beth.
So I I took that really helpful feedback and directed the teen librarian to reduce from four signs to one. And then we also made a poster-sized version so that it's all on one page because it was two eight and a half by eleven, so. One side kind of started what page two started with, like, this will get you removed from the library or kicked out of the library, whatever the language was. So it's now all all in a line and flows a little bit better. And I'll be taking a closer look at the language. We already made one other edit to be a little bit more friendly, like it says, remain in the teen room, no in and out. I said, it's that we want to limit excessive and disruptive in and out. It's not, we don't want to tell them they can't leave to go to the bathroom. You know, so we'll keep working on it, but I'm pretty sure I'll check on my way out today, but I'm pretty sure that's already been remedied.
All right, and just I just gave that feedback about eight hours ago, so thank you so much for being really on top of that and having that conversation. Anybody else have any comments or questions? No, all right, so we will move on to the next item, teen room procedures. I'm not sure if he's speaking on that. Erin, is that you?
Yeah, so. Like Stephanie, I I went to visit just to check in probably a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, there was one teen librarian and a couple of teenagers kind of playing in the back. You know, doing a video game. You know, it's. I I think it's. Like what one of the. Patrons said at our last meeting is that, you know, it seems like we've lost a lot of teenagers, right? And I think that's. You know, apparent, right? So speaking with the teen librarians, you know, the the teen room use has gone way down. One of the things that's very difficult for the teen teen librarians to manage is the. The the behavior contracts and I like to propose that we consider getting rid of those. Because looking into it, we had, I think we thought that Boston Public Library had done it and it was on their website. But I don't think they do it anymore and it seemed like a nice idea in hindsight, but. I think it's it's kind of off-putting for the for the teens who want to use it. A lot of them take one look at it and they go. I don't think my mom wants me to sign this and then they just turn around and walk away, right? So because they got to put their their name. Their address, phone number, and then they got to sign it and then after that. You know, the the librarians have to. You know, hang on to that paperwork and if the kids come back, oh, do you have a behavior contract signed and they have to go look it up? So there's a lot of paperwork for the librarians too. So. So. We're also doing. The room occupancy, right? So twenty two, I think is what we're doing and I'd rather. If we're gonna do one thing, you know, perhaps just having room occupancy is probably enough, I mean. I'll be the first one to admit, I haven't I haven't been there to see what's what's happening over the past few few months with the teen room. So I know a lot of thought has been put into this room and I'm not shooting anything down at this point. But I think it's difficult for the staff, especially unless there's two staff. Teen room staff members to have someone either at the desk or at the front, you know, greeting people. I like the idea. Of the kids being greeted, at least the ones that. Certainly were asked to leave before and to come back, so I think one of the policies we're gonna look at later was. I think we put in that if you were asked to leave, when you come back, you know, you'll go over the behavior contractor or the behavior. You know, policy with a librarian and be welcomed back, you know, so that may be even enough. If somebody was asked to leave and maybe we don't need to have a greeter every time. It just might be too much for the staff staff to manage, but. That's all I had to say and I'll open it up for further discussion.
I'm Erin, just listening to you talk, were you putting a motion forward to discontinue? The current signing of the behavior contract?
No, no official motion. I just, I'm proposing that we as a board, you know. You know, consider getting rid of that, that's all.
Hi Dana.
I guess. I'm, I think it's, oh, I missed the last meeting, that's probably why. What what is the, what happened? What's the protocol? What happens now when? Teenagers want to come into the library and use the teen room? I I didn't have to, I didn't know about some of this stuff. I missed it, but what is the current practice? That would help me to understand. If we need, if you're trying to improve things, improve relationships.
They're greeted, the staff are supposed to introduce themselves and then sign the kids in and get their names and contact information. And then we've asked the first time they come in for them to sign a behavior contract that says that they've reviewed and understand the rules and the consequences of. Violating the code of, basically the code of conduct. So.
And that's what the rule, then when you were talking about the posters, those are the rules.
Yeah, we broke.
Contract is like they come in and sign it and then they can use the space.
The contract. Yeah.
Pardon?
The contract reiterates the the rules.
The rules, okay, and this is because of all that. We had a lot of, a lot of rambunctious, we had a lot of. We had lots of issues. I won't go into all of them, but this is because of all the problems we had. This is a way to communicate to the teenagers what they. Are allowed to do and should do, but at the same time, we need to be welcoming.
To clarify what we had, what I had done before we instituted this. Was take opportunity to, when there were big groups, to kind of walk around and go to each table and orientate kids to the policy. Point out that it was there for them to refer to and these are our expectations and then when they're in violation, let them know. And that seems to be something that not all staff have been on board with doing. Enforcing the policy.
I thought that we were gonna give them training. Has that been done or is that still in the works?
I don't know if anyone has taken it yet. We just approved the cost of it to be paid from state aid last month, three weeks. I did send everybody's email and everybody on staff should now have. A request to go to library two point O and sign in and then that. Good Kids Bad Behavior webinar is available for them to take. And I'll be sending out a reminder for them to do it and then we'll be discussing it at a staff meeting.
Okay, great.
And then for the other training, which is, it's a little bit misleading. It's actually called the Homeless Institute. Where they address all, all kinds of, they address all kinds of trauma. Not just homeless people in the library, but how do we deal with mentally ill? How do we deal with? Yeah, and that's gonna be a year-long training, so that will kick off in January, so we will have a full year of, you know, what do what do we do? When people are doing XYZ, how do we react? How do we cope? So it's.
Talking about like if children are talking about we, they're depressed and they're unhappy. Yeah, is that part of it?
I don't know.
Okay.
So I don't know if you realize, when you're talking, I can't talk at the same time because of the way Zoom is set up. So every time you make a noise, it jumps back to you and then I'm.
Sorry.
I'm tired of Zoom. I don't know, I don't think that this year-long training covers suicidal ideation, but that is a separate training that we've identified that staff members need and Debbie, who has her hand raised. Is on trying to find that training, but I did not get responses from the, there's a suicide coalition. And then another thought was we could, maybe we can reach out to the guidance counselors and somebody on the school staff who's more experienced in this can come in and just do an interim. Training for us.
Oh, it sounds like you're working on it, which I think is really important, especially the what we just discussed.
But I I don't want to dismiss that we have had, granted, we have some new staff. But we do teen behavior types of training almost every other year, have permanent resources. We did another patron behavior training where we had role-playing to deal with some of these kinds of issues, so. It's not like staff have not had training.
Okay, okay.
They've had training, they've had written procedure, they've had tip sheets to go to. I've been in the teen room and modeled the behavior for the teen librarian staff. There's still a discomfort and I don't know at what point. After all of the training, if there is still a discomfort, what the next step is going to be. But enforcing library policy is in the job description of every single staff member. Not just.
Debbie, I see your hand. Beth, can you also allow me to screen share just so I can share? What? What? Signage was up. Thank you. Um, Debbie, go ahead.
Um, I was just going to say to kind of give some feedback on what Erin had said. I've spoken to a couple of, of trustees and given people my background. Um, prior to, it's been 10 years, but I spent 13 years teaching middle school and high school. I was in the school administration and I've done, I worked in a pretty rough area of St. Louis and I have a ton, like literally hundreds of hours of professional development and how to deal with difficult children too. Um, I've mentioned to Beth that I'd be willing to help anybody. And to kind of piggyback off what Erin was saying, I think it was the, the contract. Um, just kind of going back to the, my past experience, the behavior contract may not be necessary at this point for everybody. I think if we have problems with students, individual teenagers, then that could be implemented. Um, but the room occupancy is definitely an issue and staffing is definitely an issue because for the most part, um, there's only a couple of days where there are two of them in the room and the, the rest of the time, there's only one at this point. And that just comes down to staffing and budgets and money and scheduling and it's, it's trickier than it, it appears to be. You know, when we had the, the teen room shut down for the early release day, we legitimately had no one that could work it. And, you know, people in, in the public didn't understand that that was the issue too. It's, it's more than just, there's a lot that goes into it, but I think the number one thing needs to be staffing and training and maybe reconsidering the behavior contract for kids that are, that are a little bit more challenging.
Great. Thank you, Debbie. And, um, I just screen shared what was on the big board when you walked in. The two uh, pieces of paper that were printed out, that was what was posted, multiple locations. Um, and if that's been rectified already, again, Beth, thank you for, for taking that um, under advisement so quickly, but just so the board knows and can see, um, that most of that is talking about your removal and, and your strikes against you and all of the ways that you're not going to be able to use the library. And so, that I just wanted everyone who hasn't had a chance to see it, um, to see it, because I just don't think that that is the inviting atmosphere that we want. All right. Does anyone else have, um, any comments or questions about the teen room procedures at this point? Debbie, is this a new hand? No. Okay. Erin, is this a new hand? All right, go ahead.
So I think I'd like to come to a decision, uh, uh, you know, with the trustee board tonight. I, I feel like I want to take down the, the signage, um, not at least, uh, make sure it's posted somewhere. But perhaps not, not, not right in front of the door. Um, and, and also, you know, a, a good point was, uh, or something that I noticed on the signage there, it said, it said new teen, teen room rules, right? So new teen room rules. Are, are we, it's, so it's not really a policy, right? It's, it's, uh, rules for, um, using the room. Is, is that, yeah, please, Beth, if you don't mind.
They're not actually any new rules. What it is, is explaining what it means when we say like no disruptive behavior. And that includes hitting your peers, stacking furniture and climbing on it. Stealing somebody's phone and running around the room and playing chase. So we're being explicit with, it says, you know, no disruptive behavior. This is what we mean. Harassing behavior. This is what we mean. So it's really just rewritten, uh, in a clearer, less legalist way, but we haven't implemented anything new. Like a new rule would be no food and drink in the teen room. That's not in our code of conduct and that's not what we're doing.
Yeah. So I, I'd like at least to pull the word new, um, from, from the signage. And perhaps not like, like Stephanie mentioned, um, you know, perhaps not put it right in front of the door. But certainly if, I, I guess, I guess I'm prepared to make, make a motion. You know, maybe after, after John, um, if you want to engage in conversation in the topic, uh, go ahead, John.
Yeah. Um, I think I just had one pretty quick thing to say about, the rules. I mean, I, I think I'm in favor of removing the, like the signage of the rules. Cause I, I, I would think that the expectation for teenagers, you know, they should know they're in a public space, they're in someplace that, uh, they, you know, they need to act appropriately, right? Would they act this way in school? Would that be okay? No. I, I know, I know that that's a lot to ask of them and I'm not saying that I, I don't want to like, kind of put that completely on them. I think something maybe we could do is instead have those uh, rules printed out in a stack somewhere so that as soon as the librarian sees things escalating at all, that the librarian can go over and like, hey, just so you know, these are our, our rules and, and this is how you need to act, you know? And I, and I think we can, uh, maybe, maybe some of these things can be worded in a more friendly way, you know, like relating it to, to school and home. Like, would you, you know, would you do this to your, you know, at, at home? Would you do this at school? Like, you know, those types of things, like treat other people the way you want to be treated, kind of just boil it down into more like basic language in that sense. Um, not that they can't understand, you know, the more complicated stuff, but just to kind of make it easier and simpler for them to, to digest. If we hand them a two-page doc, are they really going to read it? You know, um, probably not. But if we hand them like a, a one-page thing with like 10 bullets on it. You know, that might be something that they can like immediately kind of realize, oh, wait, I am in a public space. I am in a library. I can't just go crazy and do whatever I want. That's just my thought about that. I, I know. I, I know that they, they, they may not kind of realize that initially. And so the, the paper can be the reminder and kind of the preventative, um, manner to keep things civil. And that way the, the kids who do go and do go in there and, and are civil and, and, and are doing kind of like, you know, using the room in the way that they're supposed to use it. They can do that and, and without worrying about signing rules, well, worrying about, you know, having to read the thing and sign things and all that stuff. You know, tho, those kids can just show up, do their thing. It's the kids who go in there and, and you know, either are planning to be disruptive, which hopefully that's not the case, or just things get out of hand and, and they again, kind of like forget where they are. The librarian can just go hand them paper and be like, just so you know, this is how it goes. You know, let's keep it, keep it cool. So.
Yeah. Um, and also it, along with that, you know, if we are to put a motion forward tonight, I, I think I would want to include, um, right now the teen librarian has moved, um, sorry about that, um, moved their, uh, their location. So you, you'll know it's a right in front of like the maker's face right now, um, to actually right in front of the door. So a teen has to come in and, and basically come face to face with an adult. Um, and that can, you know, kind of be a shocker, cause anxiety and that's not also what we want. So I think that they, i- if we're going to put a motion, I would like us to consider having them go back and be stationed out of their permanent desk. And maybe the signage could be put on that whiteboard that is across from their desk so that they can easily kind of reference to it. But, um, as we're on this kind of thread, um, Amy Mar from the school board is on with us. So, um, Amy, do you have any input on this?
Well, thanks for letting me talk a little bit out of turn. I was going to wait to public comment, but I, I kind of want to go back to what John was talking about, about teen behavior. I wish all those things that you said were true, John. We have a real problem in this country, in our school district, in the state, everywhere. And I spoke about this at the last meeting. Kids don't understand that they're in a public place or that they're in a school. And the state has actually really uh, hamstrung school districts very recently about what schools can do in terms of behavior modification and remediation. So there's, there's a lot of discussion going around about, you know, punishment fitting the crime, so to speak. And now a lot of the punishments that schools used to use detention, suspensions, all of that. Kids are getting away with more. They're not remembering from pre-COVID, what the expectations were. Those are being reiterated daily, but teachers are exhausted, administrators are exhausted. And the fact that that's kind of tumbled out into the library space is really unfortunate. I, I don't like the idea that we have to rely on the police to help with some of these very bad and extreme behaviors. Um, I, I guess it hasn't been an issue since the change was made. But I, I caution the trustees here about becoming too lax on one hand. Because a lot of these kids are going to figure it out and they're going to come back and it's going to be an issue all over again. On the flip side, I know, I still know, and I mentioned this in my public comment, I know many children, in fact, many parents who don't want their kids to go back. Who are afraid that they're going to get tossed out. Who are still traumatized by what went down that, that first week. And the, the decision to just, you know, it went from everybody out. And then you needed a school ID and then you didn't need a school ID. And, you know, there was an expectation that the older kids were going to reserve study rooms and stuff. I really think it would go a long way if, if the board could apologize for that. Because I think a lot of moms particularly are like, oh, you can't hang out there anymore. I don't want you there. If the police are there throwing kids out. I don't want you there. If you're afraid you're going to get thrown out, even if I know as a mother and my daughter gone, has gone back and is a volunteer. News travels very slowly in town these days, as you may have noticed. We've lost Grafton Common. We've lost uh, any real reporting out of Grafton News. It's very hard to get the word out. The library newsletter is certainly a good way, but I don't know what it would take to get a, a public statement that moms and dads could read and, and feel reassured and reassure their children that they're welcome at the library again. Um, I talked to a, a friend of my daughter's the other day who still thought that they had to show ID. It's, it's been a month since that happened. And that went away almost immediately. So it, it takes time. And I would really like to see some, some solid communication from the board to parents, either if it's through the schools, great. Whatever, whatever you guys can do, um, because I think that the numbers are down and it's really unfortunate. You know, we, we talked about the limit of the room being 25. They're not even close to that right now. If it's half full, that's a great day for them. But I'll, I'll shut up now. And if anybody wants to talk more about teen mental health and has great ideas, I'm here. I'm listening.
Thank you, Amy. I know that last meeting, a takeaway that we had said was, um, you know, to, uh, connect with the school board and the police and just, uh, really various resources in, in the town. That has yet to materialize, but I, I do think especially, you know, just hearing from Amy, again, she's a school board member, um, comments and, and this knowing that this was a problem and, and now is, there's great vacancies in, in the room, something that we should kind of press to, um, get on the books, even if it's not until the new year. But, uh, Karen, um, and then Erin, if you have something else, we'll wrap run that off.
Okay. I was just going to mention, um, Beth, I just want to, um, I believe you had said you had contacted the principal and the people at the middle school specifically. I've not, I don't remember if it included the high school to announce to the kids and let them know directly through the school that that rule had changed and the room was open. Am I remembering correctly? I know there's been a lot of conversations.
Yeah. And in fact, I think the wording of my message to, um, the middle school principal was please let them know they're absolutely welcome to come back.
Yep. Yep. And I think that was right after that rule. Okay. Yep. I ju, I, I just wanted to, um, check on that and be sure that's what, that's what happened. Thank you.
Erin, um, was that an old hand or a new hand?
No, it's, it's a new hand. So I think I'm, I'm ready to, 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 to make a motion here. So I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to, um, move the signage, um, to, uh, I, I don't know if the right word is less conspicuous, but you know, instead of right out in front of the door. So I'd like to make a motion to move the signage. You know, uh, so it's not blocking the door and, uh, a requirement for signing a behavior contract. I'd like to remove that.
I'll second.
All right. Uh, hearing your first or second, is there any discussion on the matter? Marty?
I'm not sure this is something that really should have a motion from this board. It sounds like a management process that sits with Beth. And I don't think we need to micromanage how Beth is dealing with a rather difficult problem. People talk about hypotheticals on why kids are doing this or why they aren't doing this, what they should know, what they shouldn't know. I'm not sure, but I think there are probably at least three groups of teens. One, one group being those who always behave well. Another group being those who often behave poorly. And the third, third group who can be sort of seduced into behaving poorly because it seems like fun. I haven't heard that the reason that our, um, attendance in the teen room is down is because we're being strict. It might be because they're sick, the, the good people, they're not the properly behaving people. Are tired of, of the poorly behaving people and don't want to be around there anymore. As an adult, I don't like to be around people who are behaving poorly and I make it a point not to. I've never really been one of those people to think it's, maybe it'll be fun to behave poorly and do, but that's just me. We've got a very complicated problem here and I just don't like the idea of making a vote. Then they're really micromanaging the problem. On the other hand, I think we can make an un, un, I think there's, there seems to be consensus and Beth doesn't seem to be disagreeing that the signage could change. On the other hand, the comments by Ms. Moore are, are valid to a large extent. What do you do? Is the real, I mean, do you not call the police when people are behaving poorly? Do you not enforce the rules when people are throwing things at staff members? How do you enforce the rules? I, I don't like the idea of police being called in to the library. We can't forcibly put, we can't put hands on these kids. So I don't have a problem with, if, if people misbehave, the, the authorities to deal with it are the police. That's who you call. So I'm, 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 I'm opposed to the motion for the principal reason that it, it's micromanaging Beth's job and I would rather let Beth do that job.
Thank you, Marty. Just, just a quick comment. Uh, we do have policies, uh, that address some of what you're talking about, uh, that we're going to address later on in the meeting. Um, but, but thank you for, for mentioning that.
So I just want to kind of comment on what Marty was saying, because, um, at the onset, I thought it was a little beyond the board to kind of get involved in what I agreed with was uh, um, kind of a managerial process. My understanding is with the librarians, um, in the, in, in some process of unionizing, I don't exactly know where in that, um, process they are right now. Some of the directives that are coming directly from Beth are, um, being refused to follow through if they're not coming from the board, such as this, um, where if they decisions, started at the department level, the board then, um, last meeting needed to come in and kind of say that we wanted some of this changed. Can you kind of correct if I'm speaking out of turn? I thought that, um, last meeting, the board was needed to kind of support, um, or, or change what was, what was happening.
Yeah, I, I feel like, uh, many of these things are coming from staff who in spite of training are conflict diverse. And I feel like when you look at that list of rules, it's because we or they don't want to actually go and have the conversation with the patron proactively or in the moment. Um, and so what I did was what we were doing wasn't working. And staff were also reluctant to pick up the phone and call the police because it feels. And staff were also reluctant to pick up the phone and call the police because it feels ridiculous to call the police and say, can you come? I've asked this boy to leave three times and he won't leave and he's now rolling around on the floor and pretending to cry. And I don't know what to do. So they would just kind of like remind and let it go and ignore it and roll her eyes and walk away. So I feel like the things that we implemented were to maybe help us alleviate, fine, we're not comfortable with these conversations. Let's take a break. Let's reassess what we're doing. Let's get some training. And because it felt like it was the staff against me with my many years of teen training and expertise, I used to go out and teach, I went to Worcester Public Library 15 or 20 years ago and taught their whole staff how to deal with exactly these issues in the library. But it's not been effective. You're never the expert in your own backyard. Kids have changed. Even in spite of the pandemic, Amy, they haven't changed that much. Their brains can't remember what you said to them yesterday about how to behave in public and they have to be reminded and they have to be held accountable. I feel like I am an expert in this area, but I've not been, I've not been effective in making the staff comfortable to take what I'm teaching them and training them and doing it themselves. So I said, fine, we can take a break, but I feel like I need the board to step in and say, no, you need to do what Beth is telling you to do. So that's how we got to, can you please tell me to cease and desist so that we can convey to the staff, no, we're teens are going to be in the library and we are going to enforce library code of conduct and other policies. And I feel like the conversation I'm hearing is go back to what you were doing before, which which is, or in theory, what you should have been doing before, which is we have a code of conduct that's actually pretty sound. We need to communicate it to patrons because again, like patron orientation and enforcing code of conduct is part of everybody's job description. It doesn't have to necessarily be confrontational. And, you know, I'm the one who goes up and says, hi, I'm Beth. What's your name again? Oh, how are you doing today? How was school? What's the tea? What's going on? Listen, you have your feet up on the chair. We can't do that. It's new furniture. Can you, you know, sit like sit upright and not put your feet on the furniture? Thank you so much. And it's catching kids doing things right. And I kept talking about building relationships and it just wasn't happening, but I feel like we do away with the behavior contract, which is fine. And we do away with sign-ins and we put the staff member back at the desk. Then the expectation becomes, hey, guess what? You have to do what you weren't doing before, which is enforce the code of conduct. And when it feels out of control, it's okay to call the police. The results of the eight or nine kids who we sent no trespasses to for doing things like riding their bikes around in the parking lot and flipping off patrons and shouting expletives. I'm sad they haven't come back because the thing was you're out for a month, but then come back with a parent and we'll talk about what you did wrong and how we're not going to have that in the future. And those are the relationships we want to have. The kids who I tossed out the most, incidentally, last year showed up at Halloween, said hello, call me by name, said that Karen witnessed this.
I was there.
Yeah, and they're like, oh, we don't want to come here. Everyone's mean except for you. I'm like, I don't, I don't want that. I don't want to be the only not mean one. And I'm the one who was mean and threw you out. Come back. You are more than welcome. Tell your friends. Come back. And I went, do you got any peanut butter cups? And they like emptied their pockets and gave me candy. And I'm the one who was the disciplinarian. So I'm happy to go back to that, but then, and then my role as a manager is going to be enforcing with staff. You were provided this training, provided the code of conduct, you chose not to take care of the problem when there was a problem. Now we're going to have disciplinary action. And this is more of a, at this point, a staff issue, I think, than a teen behavior issue. Not to say there isn't a team behavior issue, but we do want the kids to come back. I do see our role in the community to build healthy, happy, contributing members of adult society. Teens matter right now because they're teens and not because they're going to grow up and pay taxes to support the library. And it does start with creating a welcoming atmosphere and getting to know kids by name. And not taking it personally if they don't come to your programs, they don't want to be programmed. They just want to show up and talk to their friends and eat something and hang out and that's legitimate and okay. But that might be a mind shift for some. So I'm happy to revert back to what we're doing. I don't need direct, I feel like this is I don't need an official motion or directive from the board to do that. I'm happy to say it's coming from the board, but I'm on, you know, your side and I agree and we're going to try it and you're going to have to follow the code of conduct and enforce it yourselves. Always a phone call, but I'm not here 60 hours a week.
Now, Beth, I know you had started like signing that code of conduct because, you know, Boston Public Library does it in their teen room. So is that something that we should continue?
No, and I was even gonna, if we were still doing it by a school break, like by December, I say, don't like let's try not doing it because now I think the message is out that when you come here, you have to behave.
Okay.
And if it's not, then when they come, we'll have those conversations in the moment as they happen. And that is the job, you know, for any of the staff, your job isn't just buy books or just run book group or just answer reference questions. It is also this other piece and building community and getting to work and, you know, so there's icky things that we have to do as well, but the police.
I mean, based on what Marty said, I mean, I agree. I don't want to be micromanaging you. Put up this sign, put it, put down that sign, but I guess I want to know with the staff, does it help you if we do come out and say this? Or does it just set a bad precedent? I don't know.
Yeah, and that is, I was hoping it made me not the bad guy. To say like, I don't want to say I told you so, but like, I told you so. I told you how to do the job. You didn't do it. Then we had a problem.
Alright, so, alright, because I was like, alright, I don't want to be telling you how to do your job, but if what you're looking for is some backup, that to me is a little bit different.
But as soon as Stephanie today said, this is really unwelcoming. And I took a look at it and went, yeah, you know, you're right. And we made that change like immediately.
Okay.
Immediately, so.
Alright. Alright, thank you for clearing that up for me.
Just because we're, we have a few things left on the agenda and we're getting closer to hour mark. I saw a few hands. Does any, is any of this new? Debbie?
I just wanted to say that I was in the department head meeting when these plans were developed and have been in all of the staff meetings that we've discussed how it's working and is it working and what are we doing? And I just, even the thing of the fact of the matter is that it was at a crisis level down there. And it has, it has done what the intention was, was to stop basically to stop the bleeding. Like, I don't know that there literally was bleeding, but there could have been with, there was broken furniture. Their staff were being harassed. It was over the line. And like Amy mentioned, I used to teach too. I think a lot of this goes back to how these kids have been affected by the pandemic. That they just have had crucial years of their development where they have not been in a classroom. And they're readjusting to that. But the key point that I wanted to bring up right now is that it is working. Yes, we do need to get numbers back up. I do a lot of the social media. I'll put more stuff out on TikTok. And see what we can do to get more of the kids to have them feel welcome. There's something else, but I wanted to mention too, that is at least from a managerial point. I think like Erin mentioned earlier, would you need to maintain the occupancy for right now so that it stays within a reasonable? If you don't have someone at the front, they definitely need to be up circulating because I've been in there when there have been 30, 35 kids in there that have just stolen stuff from, you know, cumbies and they're, you know, like it's, it was chaos and it's not anymore. And the thing is to not completely, like Amy had said, not to completely just open the floodgates again, but gradually bring them back. And they are gradually coming back. But we can, we can do more things to be more welcoming. And not throw everything out, but at least have some sort of sign and sheet when they come in, maybe so we know who's in the room. I don't kind of like computer use. I don't, something that's that's a smaller version of what we've been doing. But it seems like the conversation has gone to like, oh, well, we shouldn't do this. No, we did it because we had to. And it is working and now we need to work on how to bring them back.
So I would love to I don't, Marty, I see your hand. I just want to maybe suggest that we as a board, throw this back to Beth and the other directors to kind of find a solution within the library, but Beth, I mean, I'm sorry, Marty and then Erin.
No, I think we just need to move the motion on the floor. I think that's same thing Marty was going to say, right?
No, I was going to move that we tabled the motion.
I don't think you can do that. I think
Well, you can definitely do it. It has to be seconded and voted on. The parliamentary procedure allows it to be done. But nobody wants to do that. It's okay.
I'll second it. Marty, do you want to do it?
Well, I'm moving to table the current motion.
I second to move the current, the current motion. I did want to ask one quick question.
I'm sorry, I didn't move the motion. I tabled.
I'm sorry.
Tabled the motion.
I moved the table, the motion.
I moved the table, the motion. One quick question. What can trustees do? Should we, if we visit the library more, is that helpful? What can we do? And then the way I'm looking at it is what can I do as a trustee? And also, how can we create a more welcoming environment?
Wait a minute.
Point of order, please.
Oh, sorry.
The motion on the table, it's been seconded. I don't think we should be going into another separate discussion, please Dana, no offense.
No, okay.
Great. Table this and until next trustee meeting. So with that being tabled, we are going to
I don't think that works that way.
No, Stephanie, Stephanie, there has to be a vote on my motion.
Oh, right. Sorry. Marty tabled it. So those who agree with tabling the motion until next meeting, please say aye. Marty?
Aye.
Erin?
So just, I'm going to say aye, but it doesn't need to be tabled to the next meeting. It's not a motion that's tabled to the next meeting. He's just tabling it. So I agree, I table it.
Dana?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Stephanie, aye. So I'm sorry, I lost where I was. I believe that we're on the new business funding request. Correct? For the signet bill for the security system assistance in the amount of 890. Beth, do you want to?
Staff key cards stopped working and allowing them to enter the building. And I called the company who installed the software. And they sent a technician out who said it wasn't working because everybody's cards were set to expire a year after they were issued. Which if they had told me that by email or phone instead of coming out, it would have saved us almost $900. But I had no way of knowing that was the issue and they they don't know this system well. We are like their only client with the system that we have. It's a German based system, so everything's in translation and convoluted and hard to understand. So they weren't able to provide guidance beyond coming out and looking and figuring out the problem. Unfortunately.
So Beth, you need a motion to approve that, correct?
A motion to pay from state aid, $890 for the signet bill.
Okay, I make a motion to pay for the signet bill of $890 from state aid.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, all that agree. Marty?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And Stephanie, aye. At this point, I am going to temporarily turn it over to Erin, who is the chair of the policy committee to go over the code of conduct and the privacy and confidentiality policies.
Thank you, Stephanie. So regarding our last policy committee meeting, Debbie, can you remind me, did we just? Actually, could you remind me of what we discussed at our last meeting? I know it's been a week. I can't hear you, Debbie.
I do not even know what's going on right now. I was literally in the chat getting ready to say, hey, I'm going to take off for the evening. It's my son's birthday tomorrow. I can look this up real quick.
It's okay. I know we discussed the art display policy. I don't know if it just went to legal or if we were going to table it for the time being. I just don't remember what we discussed.
Beth, Beth or John, do you remember?
A minute, it's okay.
Sorry, yeah, I don't remember what we what we decided at the end of that.
We talked about art display, but I don't just send it to legal because I don't get a response. I need to wait until legal has office hours scheduled, send it like the day before and then sit down and have a conversation. It's not that easy as sending it off. I think there was one thing that we still had a question or concern about that we rebegun a wordsmith, but
Okay. Thank you. I think that's fine. I think that's fine. So this evening you have the privacy, which one did we talk about first?
Code of Conduct.
The Code of Conduct, yeah. So there's some, there's some additions to this policy. And I'll certainly open it up for discussion if we have a vote to approve it. But in really looking, looking this over since the last time we discussed it. Well, why don't we have a motion to approve it and then we can have some discussion and I'd like to lead off the discussion.
I make a motion to approve the revised code of conduct policy.
Second.
Okay, great. So I think maybe some attention needs to, needs to be brought back to some of the earlier parts of the policy. Because I know we last reviewed it in, it says January 2020. And that was before we had moved into the new space. So line H2, is that 32H? Is that right? It says beverages are available for sale at the Friends Cafe as a fundraiser for Friends in the Library. Does that exist? Apparently, are they still doing that?
I don't think that will be in place until we finish with the counter renovations that are being scheduled for December. Because it hinges on cutting away part of the counter to install vending, at which point I presume they will remove all of the puzzles and CDs that are taking up the counter space and bring back their key rig.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that's just, go ahead.
So because it's pending, I didn't feel like it was appropriate to remove it. The two things that I was looking for was it said age 14 for unattended child when it's age 13 that a child can be unattended at the library. So we wanted to correct that to bring in line with the unattended child policy. And then the other piece was originally it said procedures. And that this part was the policy and this was the procedures. And we just removed the word procedures and consolidated this a little bit so that it's clear to the public, the consequences of being in violation of this code of conduct. Which does say like we will call the police if you're not compliant.
Yeah.
None of that highlighted stuff here is new. The only thing that's new and highlighted is the age 13 up here.
Thank you. Line K. It says that the bathrooms are single occupancy. Is that true? Because I think, I feel like the men's room might not be in the new library.
Yeah, we could change it to stall as long as there's an understanding that the gender neutral bathrooms that don't have a stall is one, is a single occupant. We are having a problem now with three or four middle schoolers going into a single stall altogether. As opposed to going into the gang bathroom to take turns in the bathroom with stalls. It's a social behavior. But it's really not appropriate.
Okay, I think I'm okay with that line. Line N, bicycles and scooters should be secured by locking the bicycle rack outside. Does that still exist?
Yes.
It does. Okay. Yeah, then it says skateboards, rollerblades, scooters and similar equipment may not be used in the library grounds, right? In the library, library grounds. Should that include bicycles?
I think we want them to ride their bike to the library, but what we wouldn't want is for them to try and ride their bike down the stairs at the library. Or on Or on the amphitheater seating, like in the children's patio amphitheater. And if you've been outside, you'll notice that there's deterrence, little metal things that are flush, but won't allow you to roll wheels over it kind of exactly for that reason. Bicycles can be ridden to the library to, on the grounds and then locked. And we don't want people coming in with skateboards and blades and riding through the library. Or on equipment. So there, there might be a better way to word that, but.
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is because there was some incidents where people were riding aggressively in the parking lot on their bikes. And I didn't know if we needed to change that language.
I, I think it's okay as long as it's not being disruptive or destructive. Or, or interfering is kind of the first thing up at the top of the policy. You can't interfere with anybody else's writer ability to use the library. So if you're riding aggressively in the parking lot, that's different than riding your bike and parking it and locking it. And the kids who are doing that, when we, we said, what, what were you thinking? Gotta be funny. No.
Hi everyone, sorry. I just want to jump in here. My understanding of these two policies were that they got, they were, were, went over with a comb by policy committee. And then we're just being presented to us. But there seems to be a lot of discussion within members of the policy group right now. So is this ready and appropriate for us to be voting on or? Is this, should this be with policy committee? I just want to make sure I am understanding where it is right now.
Yeah. So, so that, that's a great point. I, I didn't feel like this was ready and that's why I'm bringing, bringing up these points. So these are small points and thank you Beth for addressing each one. I agree with your comments on, on each of them. The, the one, the part that was brought to my attention in that, I, I'm not sure that I entirely agree with the way that it's written. Is, you know, oh, two, it says for violations of local, state or federal law, the procedure is immediately expulsion followed by suspension for one week to one year. So I could read this one of two ways. If, if you, if you break the law, then you're gonna be expelled from the library. But if you break the law, you really, I mean, the police should be called at that point, right? Or does this say, if you break the law, I mean, the police will be called, but you also be expelled, expelled from the library?
My, maybe it's just an assumption is if you've broken the law, then we're calling the police.
Right.
And often the, the only ways that we have been able to get people's full names and phone numbers or addresses is when the police officer in uniform shows up and asks, which is challenging and frustrating.
Marty, I see your hand raised.
Well, just, just because for violations of local, state or federal law, no one has violated local, state or federal law until the court says so. So what we're really dealing with here is beliefs by the staff that a violation is in process. And I think that's important just in terms of, we, you know, we're, as the board, the library is a state agency. So all of the constitutional privileges that we have as American citizens will apply in action by the board. So I think it's, it's just for the sake of language, because people who are accused of things will look at the language. To make clear, so I think Erin, you, you might be right. This might need a little more tweaking. But it, it, I, I noticed that myself, that the, the library staff isn't trained in the law, they're not to be charged with the, with the law. Do you have a good idea? Somebody hit somebody else is probably a violation of the law. But, you know, they're gonna say it was self-defense or whatever. I, I just want to, yeah.
Staff are leaving, so I'm waving.
Yeah, so, yeah, but you can, I mean, but see, in other words, the staff has the right to expel a person if they believe that they have broken the code of conduct. And that includes doing things that they think violate the law. And let the police deal with the police and everybody else deal with the details of it.
So the things at the top half of this policy, which was approved by legal are behaviors that are specifically prohibited by state law. Oh yeah, so if someone is smoking or vaping, we can just ask them to leave, but we can also call the police, have them escorted out and say you're out for a week or a month or a year. Depending on the severity of the action. Same with drug and alcohol possession or consumption. You know, we went through a period where we kept finding nips in the bathroom. And it was only happening when a certain patron came in in the morning and signed up to use the computers and we called the police to have the conversation. And then it never happened again, but had it happened again, then I think it would be, okay, now you can't be here. You're breaking the law. But you know, damaging or defacing library materials or property is on there and we're just not able, always able, like we don't know who broke that Adirondack chair that probably costs twenty five bucks at Coopman's. We can't recoup that damage until we call the police and get them to get the person's name.
So does this need to go back to the policy committee in that, in this case?
I still don't think so. It's past legal and I had two very minor changes, the word procedure.
All right, so this, this is ready for us to vote on.
Yeah. Okay. Unless my colleagues say otherwise.
All right, so um, I guess to move it forward, I'll make a motion to accept the code of conduct policy.
It's already on the table, Karen.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I mean, the, the question is if the chair of the policy committee, sounds like he's not certain that he really wants it to be brought up. And I would defer to that chair under circumstances.
Yeah, so I, I just, I wanted to have some further discussion regarding some of the language, because I, I didn't quite understand it. Because you mentioned that there were, there weren't, you know, many changes and you're, you're probably right. It's just that I, I felt that line O two was a little ambiguous. But, you know, if the board is ready to vote on this tonight, then, then I'm certainly ready to vote on it. Everybody's had a chance to read it. And we have a motion on the floor to, to vote on the code of conduct.
Marty?
Can I move the question?
Second.
All right, so the motion is to move the question. And it's been seconded and all in favor, Karen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye, this is, aye.
Marty?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Erin?
Nay, because I don't, I don't know what move the question means.
Marty, go ahead.
It, it means to end the discussion on the motion. So what we're voting on is agreement to end discussion on the motion and put the motion itself on the floor for a vote to with the, the motion to accept the code of conduct. So this vote is simply to end that early discussion.
Move the question, okay. Well, I, I vote nay. So we can, we can continue.
Stephanie, aye. So the motion to end the discussion would carry and then we would go back to the motion that is on the floor to vote. The motion and it's been seconded to pass the code of conduct. So with the discussion being ended, those in favor of passing the code of conduct as it is currently written. Erin?
Erin, aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Dana?
Um, I guess I'm gonna say no, because I don't understand how, what changes are gonna be made.
Marty?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And, oh, sorry. Stephanie, I am gonna say no. The reason for my no would be, I don't feel confident in coming from the, the policy committee to have it on the floor. So that is for my reason. So I do believe that it still carries. Erin, do you want to talk to us about the privacy and confidentiality policy? Is that ready to be presented or?
Yes.
Okay.
So I will hear a, a motion to approve the privacy and confidentiality policy.
I make a motion to approve the privacy and confidentiality policy.
I second that motion. Is there any discussion on that? Marty?
Did we get that on the screen, please? Or is it now on the screen?
It's on the screen now.
Okay, thank you. I just, I need like thirty seconds to look at it again.
Sure.
I gotta scroll through it though.
I will just say that at the bottom it says approved ten twenty-six because we had anticipated passing it. So that will be changed.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it now. I now remember what it was about. Okay.
So I, I believe the only addition is towards the end that adds the the appeal process.
Thank you for highlighting that again. I don't see any further comments or discussion. I'm just, sorry, the orientation of everyone changed. I just wanted to double check that. Okay, so I'm seeing and hearing no other questions for Erin on that, those in favor of passing the policy and confidentiality policy. Please reply in the affirmative. Erin?
Erin, aye.
Karen?
Karen, aye.
Dana?
Dana, aye.
Marty?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie, aye. All right, thank you, policy committee. Also, just to highlight before we move on, the next policy committee meeting is Wednesday, November thirtieth. At seven PM via Zoom. Oh, Beth, can you take us through your director report and stats next?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't do a fancy infographic for each month, sorry. We were open twenty-seven days in October. We had seven thousand three hundred and forty-two visitors, which I think is a new record since being open for the last year. And one month. We had thirty programs which had one thousand one hundred and twenty attendees. We had a hundred and twenty-six meeting room reservations for two hundred and sixty-seven participants, as well as an additional eighty-six meeting room uses, either for staff meetings or library programming. We had eighteen low coverage instances. We had to pull somebody from another department to cover a service desk for a meal because of staff leave time or whatever. Derailing them from their work or duties. We called in temps and in, on occasion, we closed departments. We did not have to close the whole library at any time in October. I completed the two thousand twenty-two financial heiress report for the state for Mass Porter Library Commissioners and we are compliant, which means we will get state aid money. It's always dependent on a number of variables, but it's usually upwards of twenty-five thousand dollars, which is under the trustee's jurisdiction to spend. I mentioned that we did receive a budget update and I'm gonna be going through it and getting some training and sending it out for December. Talked about the building, construction, IT. COVID nineteen update is that there was a mask advisory and urging of flu and COVID nineteen vaccinations at the end of the month. Passed through by the Board of Health, but no changes to any of our current procedures or protocols. We had a month of programs around an emotional wellness and mental health theme for October, including programming based on a grant we got from the Coalition for Healthy Greater Worcester, which helped fund our tumble bus program, which had fifty-five participants at the beginning of the month. And the giggles, goats and giggles program at the end of the month. It was hugely popular. We had a hundred and thirty-two people come. If you like went on all fours, the goat would climb on your back. We have a ton of really funny pictures. And lots of laughs. We also had children's yoga and the month culminated in an emotional wellness fair where we had various vendors. Talk about everything from healing properties of CBD and incense and tea. To light therapy, healing crystal therapy. I have selenite somewhere on my desk to battle negative energy now. People who wrote self-help books, it's helping. People who wrote, you know, self-help books. It wa, it was a really well-attended and really wonderful program that we'll repeat next year at the beginning of the month to kick off emotional wellness week. And some of the vendors did mini sessions, small attendance, but really valuable for the folks who went. We did a lot of outreach. We were at the Oktoberfest fundraiser, which left the library very short-staffed on the Saturday it was held. You know, they, they saw probably a thousand people at that event. We were on site for the municipal centers, Halloween trick-or-treat program. And then we counted five hundred and seventy-three people who came in between five and eight on Halloween. To get allergen-free treats and emotional wellness, things like stress poppers. And fun stickers and that kind of thing. We have mandala pumpkin painting for teens and adults. It says that program was a success, but we didn't have a ton of people attending for the cost of the program. Borrow services. I didn't write down the physical items, I'm sorry. I know I had fifty-one museum pass reservations, forty pickups and eleven no-shows. Registered eighty-seven new borrowers. And in fact, I have a correction for September where it was reported we only had twelve new library cards. I should have caught that. September is National Library Card Sign-Up Month. We actually gave out a hundred and two cards in September, which isn't our highest in the last year, but is still pretty significant. If you haven't been paying attention to staff displays, they're more amazing every month. The National Pizza Month Cookbook Display was the winner for October. And for November, we have a beautiful display on succulents that's getting lots of attention. We had twenty volunteers who put in seventy-six hours of service. And a special thank you to our gardening volunteer Christine, who showed up like every Tuesday morning, all spring, summer and into the fall. And she says she'll be back on Tuesday mornings once it's over fifty degrees in the spring and looks forward to other people joining in and helping on Tuesday morning. We went to Crescent Manor and served seven patrons there who checked out eighteen items. Delivered eleven items to homebound patrons. So anybody who's on, you know, bedrest, broke their leg, is in quarantine. We offer that service, no questions asked to people who can't get out to the library. Anytime for as long or as little time as you need it. Reference provided two hundred and fifteen computer use sessions, not including wifi, which is still not trackable. Staff answered two hundred and fifty-one reference questions and placed seven hundred and forty holds in October. Another outreach thing was Heidi who made a pair of scarecrows to look like they were waltzing based on the book Waltz of the Scarecrows. And that went across the street for the rec departments program and then got packed up and brought to the Community Harvest Project for their scarecrow contest. Eric did a lot of work on weeding our nonfiction collection, getting rid of things that are not circulating and making recommendations to fill gaps. He also works a lot on our databases and make sure that our links are up to date. And he's been helping to determine, we're probably gonna be getting rid of hoopla and switching to a different service for streaming media. So he's been instrumental in helping with that. Heidi had five in-person book groups. We also experimented with spooky movie nights, including Rocky Horror Picture Show and like they just were not attended. So it, we did a programming survey. We got fifty-six responses. I thought movies was on the list, but either it's a weird idea to come to the library and watch a movie or people are really not into it, or it's seniors during the day who want movies. I don't know. But we've got to kind of revamp that. We had Ukulele one oh one with six to eight participants for, over the six-week session who learned how to play ukulele for the first time. Fashion in your closet was in partnership with Grafton Historical Society and had twelve attendees. Saturday afternoon knitting, et cetera, which has now expanded to bring your project, whether it's quilting or embroidery or mending. You can't always promise there's somebody there to help you, but we do have through overdrive crafting on demand, where if you need the basics in knitting or crocheting or quilting or cross-stitch, we can direct you to resources while you're there and provide some materials. we can direct you to resources while you're there and provide some materials so you can get whatever crafty project you want to work on completed. New England Horror Writers Halloween Program had six attendees and Queer History has so I'm trying anything where I'm, we're gonna be tracking our programming differently to meet new requirements from the state. They're interested in every individual program. Was it live? Was it virtual? Was it virtual but archived? Like we did a, a story time and it wasn't live and it was canned. How many views did it get? So we're starting to track attendance a little differently and also starting to evaluate what's the cutoff point? You know, if there's one or two people, is that a program? So this year, this month's report has more direct attendance statistics related to specific programs instead of just the overall number. Friends, update that I have on here is that we're still selling bags and they're available at the service desk. If you want to get one of two sizes of bags. And then the yes log, nobody recorded. I guess we didn't say yes to anybody for the month of October or nothing got recorded. The no log was donate, no donations at this time. No, we don't sell coffee or have a cafe. No, we weren't gonna have a cafe with the new building, but I've already explained, we're waiting for the counters to get modified before we add the Keurig back and a vending machine. No, we're not hiring. No, we're not open on Sundays. And then peeking comments, kind of like in other months. Lots of things that got compliments also got complaints. So there's no pleasing anybody or, you know, ever pleasing everybody, really. Compliments on the building, more than ten. Complaints about the building, two. There was dirt was one of them. Compliments about Heidi's costumes, complaints about Heidi's costumes, compliments about printing, complaints about printing, compliments about the AMH. People hate the AMH. Um, complaints about teen room procedure. One of the things that you'll know when you go to look, to read this full report is I did track or the, the teen librarian staff did track how many people they turned away on a couple of dates. And some of the comments the kids made, like, uh, behavior contract does sound like a lot of work just to get a book. And that's kind of a fair point. Comments on those staffing, compliments about programs, lots of compliments about the duck scavenger hunt that the children's room put together and compliments about how beautiful their displays are and how interactive the space is, which you've already heard several times tonight. Um, and then I've got just, I just pulled out a couple of quotes. Someone wants to know if we can have a badge in or badge out process. So a person come in, can come in unattended on a Sunday and read and hang out in the library alone with no staffing, which some libraries, mostly university libraries are experimenting with that. A suggestion that we have a program for adults about how to cook to sustain yourself for a week. And I could totally see doing a like, how to make a rotisserie chicken that you pick up for seven ninety-nine at Stop and Shop, stretch out for the whole week. And dishes, you know, five dishes that you can make to make that stretch. So I might try to do that one. A complaint, the day you close last week for staff development, as a lifelong taxpayer, the library should never be closed during business hours. It should always be open until the staff leave. And how dare we close to train our staff? Someone who was upset when they showed up on the fourth week of ukulele one oh one and wasn't just letting to the class, because each session builds on the other. And that apparently wasn't clear from the wording on the website. So if, when we offer it again, we'll make sure that we'll take away the registration form after the first week and make it clear that it's session one of six, two of six. Et cetera. So like all this feedback is really important and we do respond to it by, you know, pivoting and making changes to continue to improve the library. Yeah. I'm happy to answer any questions if people did. I, I did send it out very late. I'm so sorry. But you can also email any questions that you have and I'm happy to respond if there are things that, you know, raise concerns or you want to say, hey, good job. Anybody in particular? Not me.
Does anybody have any questions for Beth? Regarding her update?
By doing it at the annual, I'll just want to leave.
Beth, it's, it's always my favorite part of our meeting.
I love it when the things on the no log one month become yeses the following month. So somebody did, did, was upset or not upset, but we put that, no, we don't have a piano electronic keyboard that we can loan out. And it was like back in September and I bought one and it's circulating. And you can now check out an electronic keyboard, yeah, from the library and from the library things.
I'll also add my, um, condo. We had our annual meeting at the library. Jane was wonderful helping out with the screens. Everyone was very impressed with the library. I ended up giving a couple of tours and things like that. So, and, um, yeah, you, you have an annual customer with us. Let's put it that way. So. Yeah.
The, the meeting room use, I'd say surpassed, has surpassed my wellness dreams. Like it's ju, they're just all in use all of the time and it's really great. And it's been, uh, you know, November first last year is when we introduced the meeting rooms and started the signups. I'm a training staff that when we accept a registration, we might have to go in and edit to make sure that the patron who submitted the request doesn't have typos and make sure we're hiding their personal information and putting the right room number.
Yeah. Yeah. And I will also mention, I had put down that, um, we were going to be using the screen and everything. And that was the day the wifi was out and Jane called me directly to let, to be sure I knew it and that we didn't need wifi. And I'm like, no, I've got everything on a flash drive. We're fine. But I thought that was very good that, you know, she called to check on that and to let me know, just in case.
Thank, I'll pass that on. Thank you for letting me know.
Any other questions for Beth? Seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna close out this section and just open it up for any public comment here at the end of the meeting. All right, um, hearing and seeing none, just want to again remind everyone policy subcommittee has a meeting November thirtieth at seven via Zoom. And the next Board of Trustees meeting will be Wednesday, December fourteenth. Um, at seven PM via Zoom.
Stephanie, if I could just interject, thank you so much for running tonight's meeting by computer. That was fine at six-thirty. Decided at ten of seven, it wasn't working anymore. And I just didn't think I could run a meeting on my phone with all of these boxes. So, um, thank you for stepping up at literally the last minute, so.
Absolutely, no problem.
Thank you.
Um, I am seeing nothing in the chat, uh, seeing no hands raised. So, um, can I, is there a motion to adjourn at nine twenty?
So moved.
Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor, Erin?
I.
Karen?
Karen, I.
Dana?
Dana, I.
Marty?
Hi.
John?
John, I.
And Stephanie, I. So with that, I bring, um, to a close, the Wednesday, November sixteenth meeting of the Grafton Library Board of Trustees.